I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is the October 7th meeting of the Clinton School Committee. Can we start with a motion to approve the bills?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of September 23rd?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Mr. Sermack, do—oh, there she is. We're ready for you.
Hi, Sophia.
Hello.
Thanks for being here.
Of course. Good evening. Last Thursday, CHS hosted Dr. Alicia Casey, a pediatric doctor from Children's Hospital, and a 1994 graduate of Clinton High School. Dr. Casey spoke to the student body about the negative effects of vaping, along with the concerns of the medical community. The following day, we had our annual fall sports rally to celebrate student athletes. Both events went really well, adding an informative presentation and getting the students' school spirit ready for the football season in the span of two days. Clinton's last student ran a blood drive with the Red Cross will be held this Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., with appointments every 15 minutes. Walk-ins are welcome. On October 19th, the annual Ghost and Goblins fundraiser will take place at Central Park starting at 2:00 p.m., with a kids' one-mile race followed by the 5K starting at 3:00. We encourage everyone to lace up and dress up for this annual event, proceeds to benefit the Clinton High School's robotics team. Later that evening, from 6:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., the class of 2021 will be hosting this year's homecoming dance with their theme of Glow in the Dark. For 15 a ticket, all Clinton High School students will be able to glow with us throughout the night. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The presentation on the dangers of vaping, some of us had an opportunity to attend, and I just thought it was amazing, but I'm curious to know what the student reaction was.
Well, what I heard personally was that it wasn't executed very well in terms of how informative it was due to like the slides and the amount of information that was given off.
There was a lot of information, yeah.
It was a lot of information for a short amount of time.
Yeah.
But I personally found it very good.
Right.
Because I have been told the effects of vaping and—I've personally seen it with friends who have those side effects now due to it, and they didn't know in the beginning of it, and now having this presentation, it really put them in the mindset of, oh, this obviously isn't good for me, so I really think that this was good for all the students of Clinton High.
That's wonderful. Any questions for Sophia? Thank you so much.
Of course.
Do we have anything from the PTA tonight?
You can leave that. They don't want to listen to me.
We'll share.
The only thing I have for the PTA is our upcoming meeting is this Thursday at 6:30 in the CES library. Then I do have CPAC.
Please.
Okay, so on Wednesday, October 16th, we will be hosting a make-it-take sign class at the United Church of Clinton on Haskell Lab, with a portion of the cost going to CPAC. There is a Facebook event page available to people. And we are in the process of setting up a speaker from an organization that helps parents prepare for safety and crisis planning. It's called a SAFE for Me, example of what—if any information needs to be with the police or fire department in case of an emergency, example if your child is nonverbal. So then, when—if there's an emergency that takes place in the home and police or fire needs to come, then they'll have some information ahead of time and hopefully be able to help the family in whatever crisis they may have. It's scheduled for Thursday, November 21st, and we'll be co-hosting this with Clinton Early Childhood Resource Center and Parks and Rec. And so then the cost will be split between the three of us, which is always of us. And our location will be determined soon. We're kind of negotiating it between the three departments. And then we are—and if anyone wants any information, I do have a flyer for SAFE for Me. And then we are embarking on our biggest fundraiser ever for CPAC. We're finishing up our letterhead to be sent out to local businesses and organizations, requesting businesses and organizations to buy a square on a monopoly board called Clintonopoly. There are 40 squares on the game also included. Also, on top of that, there are money and chance and community chess cards, all at a cost. We're hoping to order 500 games, with the cost being $25 each to our families. We won't be getting—we missed the deadline, so we won't be getting it until after Christmas. But the money's received, we're going to put a small portion to our scholarship so that we do not have to actively fundraise for the next couple of years. And then the rest of the money is going to go into the special education department of our school district. We would work with the special ed department to see what we can do with that money. But we're hoping to raise around $10,000 for special ed.
That's awesome.
It's pretty—pretty cool.
Yeah.
Looking forward to reserving my copy.
Yeah.
Clintonopoly.
So we're looking for—so they'll—they'll pay for their spaces, and then it's like if we sell 500 games, then that's like between 40 and 60 cents per business advertisement that's hitting 500 households. So it's pretty cool.
Nice.
Have you put your list together yet of costs to get a space on the board?
Yes.
Where you can communicate that out?
Yes, and so that—they gave us a confusing flyer, and I'm going to simplify it. So our letter will go on one side, and on the other side will be this information. It'll be broke down with numbers, numbering it out, and then the exact amount per square and/or bills or cards.
Nice.
So—it'll be no cost to us upfront, which is how you want to run a fundraiser. And then all monies received will go straight into our scholarship. We'd like to put at least $2,000 towards the scholarship and the rest into our school district.
Nice.
Great idea.
Joel?
Yeah?
I just want to add one thing to Kelly, which was talking about SAFE for Me. The Clinton Police do have a form right now if somebody wants to fill that out already. If you have a child with heart problems or nonverbal, or a senior with dementia or anything like that, the police have those forms where—if they are called, it's already filled out with the child's picture, the information, the medications, and everything, and it helps speed the process.
This might be—for families that might not know that that is a process that they can be—that can be taken advantage of. I also do know that both our fire and police go through extensive training, and I do know that they have, you know, at least one point person, but possibly more. This was like quite a few years ago that I found out, but they have people that are specifically trained to help with like a child that might have autism or any other— they're not just going in blindly. They do have training.
And just you coming here tonight is bringing awareness. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all of your good work.
Thanks.
He's trying to find a place for his house.
Is there anything from the CTA tonight?
Hi.
Hi. After a lot of hard work and a lot of data crunching, I think we are very close to sending you back all the information that you requested to continue with the stipend negotiation. So I should be hitting the button. I'm waiting for one more person to get back to me. We looked at surveys from 2017 that the CTA sent out, and then Dr. Meyer surveyed in 2018, and put that in a pretty standard format as to what the job description would entail and how much time and kind of all the things that you might want to think about every activity. It's about an 18-page document, and I have a few finishing tweaks to put on it sometime tonight or tomorrow, and then I should get that to you, and then we should be able to move forward.
Sounds good. Great.
And we were今天我们 had a meeting after school, and we nailed down some more plans for our winter social on the 5th.
Terrific.
For our new members, so—well, for everybody, but to specifically—
To welcome the new members.
Welcome the new members. Yeah.
Nice.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment tonight? Okay. Dr. Meyer?
All right, we have one resignation. Shayna LeBlanc resigned. She was an IA at the elementary school. She filled in for us as a long-term sub IA last year at the middle school, and then we were able to offer a permanent position at the elementary school this year, but this really wasn't the ideal position that she had hoped for. It was just kind of the one we were able to give her, so she's made the decision to move on, so we wish her well. Lemmonster Credit Union furniture donation, just want to bring that to the board's attention. Lemmonster Credit Union is doing some renovations, and they had some sets of office furniture that they were going to be discarding, so we were able to—one of our school committee members seemed to pick it up while making a transaction, understood that there was going to be some useful garbage, so he alerted me, and we sent—a Russ was able to go over and check out the furniture and see the quality of it and everything, and we brought back one office set that they were going to get rid of.
Terrific.
And then there's actually more we're going to be able to get as they go through with their renovation. So I know a lot of times the committee might make a motion to accept the donation and then just have us write some sort of letter of thanks. I don't know if—
We certainly can.
Yeah.
By policy, and I apologize for not knowing this—Mary? Is there a limit at which that process kicks in?
I don't believe there is.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the donation from Lemmonster Credit Union of office furniture and authorize—the superintendent's office to send a thank you letter?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Go back.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Great.
And thank you for keeping your head up and eyes open for opportunities.
So from the strategic plan, this month—or this week, this meeting, we have community engagement. So I did put together a little community engagement update instead of me just talking. It's a—it's a separate sheet that wasn't in your packet that I just handed out to you. I just tried to get some things from the principals. It's not really an exhaustive list. It's just kind of—I just asked them for some of their thoughts, so I'll highlight some of them. First one, the Family Outreach Coordinator. Mr. Hastings had been helping coordinate information in the process for the position of that Family Outreach Coordinator, went to some other districts to meet, met with our guidance staff, tried to pull together some information, turned all that over. Mr. Hastings official last day was Friday, so I wished him well on Friday. Helene Robles will now be our—kind of filling the void as a Family Outreach Coordinator. She'll be doing that with us three days a week as part of an internship. Her main role will be assisting families with the registration process and those types of things. She's a former student, and she—and her parents are also—her parents' first language is not English, so she actually has a lot of firsthand experience with things like, you know, trying to navigate sort of the, you know, American school system if it's something that you're not familiar with. So overall, we hope to, you know, finalize a posting in the near future, and I think there's really kind of three things that I'm hoping to get out of this position. One is assisting families with registration in school meetings, kind of being a support or advocate almost in those meetings. Translation services for documents and other types of communication, and maybe also serving some role with public relations and communication. The marketing committee did meet, we can talk about that at marketing if we want, but it kind of had a little overlap there in terms of community engagement. The elementary school, the one thing I'd point out is that next week, October 15th to 18th, there's a book fair, and they're doing some literacy events with the book fair. On the 15th, they're having a breakfast, breakfast and browse books, and then on the 17th, they're having a parent university literacy night, where they're going to work with parents on how they can—how they can work with their kids. Also, one thing I wanted to point out, the elementary school under community partnerships, local author Janet White donated copies of her book to first graders and visitor students on October 1st, and this is her book, Star Named Wink. So she actually raised enough funds to basically purchase copies of her book and donate one to every single first grader, and came in and met with the kids, and that's a chance to kind of—kids had a chance to actually interact with the author, so it was a nice thing that they coordinated. At the middle school, the main thing I wanted to highlight is in terms of another kind of community partnership or opportunity for the community to interact. The week of the 21st is STEM Week, and so the middle school, working with I Too, will be doing a whole series of STEM activities. We've got all kinds of—all the materials in, including—I think there's a whole refrigerator now of like hearts they have to dissect and all that kind of stuff, so it'll be—it looks really interesting over there. So the STEM Week will be running that week, the week of the 21st. Because of our half-day PD day on the 25th, Monday, the 28th, will actually be when we're going to hold a STEM Week showcase. So be at the very end of the day, but parents will be invited in to kind of see, you know, what were some of the things that their kids had an opportunity to do during—as those STEM Week activities. So I think that's another exciting—exciting one coming up.
Indeed.
And at the high school level, financial aid nights coming up, October 16th, 6:30 to 7:30. That's always an important one for parents to come in with their students and try to learn about that process. And the Cable Commission, the high school is now kind of taking over working with the Cable Commission, and what they're looking is possibly expanding and maybe adding live streaming of events, so we could actually try to maybe broadcast some things live on the cable channel to try to help get our—you know, get our events out there and allow more people to go to the cable channel and experience it, so. Those are some of the ones I just wanted to highlight. I mean, obviously, there's some more in this list. Like I said, it's not a fully exhaustive list. I don't know if you have any questions on any of those, or we're okay?
Sounds good.
And I think all these kind of—all these big bullets here were all the goals from the strategic plan, so I was just trying to show how some of those mapped into that. All right, accountability data. So you have some really—I don't know, pronounced with a lot of numbers on them in here. So if you start on the first page, the 2019 Official Accountability Report for Clinton shows that our overall progress towards improvement targets is 44%. This is a weird—not weird, but it's just you've got to understand the scale. Basically, 25% to 50% essentially means you're in what's they consider no change. 50 to 75 means improving. 75 to 100 means—it means like you're exceeding, and anything below 25 would be you're declining. So we're at 44. I think when you go down to the points awarded, I think the one that—the one that I would like to highlight would be—you could see under achievement for mathematics achievement as a district, we have four points for all our students and our lowest-performing students, which meant that in mathematics, our students exceeded their growth targets in mathematics. So we—you know, we started implementing Eureka Math last year in grades three through six, and we can look grade by grade by grade, and we saw tremendous growth in every single grade, grades three through six. The more disappointing one is the English Language Arts Achievement. You could see as overall, we got zero. We also made some changes in our English Language Arts Achievement last year, and I think—I think while the model we're—we're moving towards ultimately is where we need to be, and it's going to be allow us to grow a lot more in the future. I just think we have some more gaps kind of in that implementation that we need to—we need to fulfill. So one of the things we work on right now is digging into the data to figure out exactly where those gaps are, so that we can try to address those. Some of the other ones, growth was kind of, you know, okay as a district. The progress towards English Language proficiency declined overall, but it was improving for high school students. And then the additional indicators, typically you're looking at chronic absenteeism, which is another one I said we're trying to look at how we address that in terms of, you know, how we can—not just—not just working with students to get them in school, but when they're not in school for legitimate reasons, making sure we're coding those things accurately. So that's a lot of the—that's kind of the overall summary they give you. If you flip like two more pages, you'll see another—it's like the same one, except now instead of saying—I should say detailed data for each indicator. This is where you can really see kind of the—this is like the actual scores on the test, right? So all—in 2018, in English Language Arts, our average student score was a 494.6. In 2019, it was a 493.5, so it actually dropped 1.1 points. I always try to put that in perspective, and I say that, you know, you're looking at a test that has about 60 questions on it, and then they scale it to a system where the average score is 500. So basically, you know, there's each each question—each individual question can be worth like eight points or something like that, you know what I mean? So a change of a point isn't really—it's—I mean, it's significant because it is a large sample size, but it's also—it's not like, you know, it's like one out of every five kids might have got one additional question wrong, you know what I mean? But we need to work on it, and we need to get better. And then you can see the CPI, which is for the high school, because they were taking a different test last year. Oh, no, sorry. This is the first year they took the same—the same test, but they still needed to have a CPI for the accountability. In mathematics, you can see where—as a district, we improved. We went from 486.7 to 489.2, which is a 2.5% change, and you can see right in there we exceeded target for all the—all the math ones. So I think the positive is math. I think we—we made some good math, and then it's just us reassessing where we are in our ELA changes to try to make sure we're moving forward in that. So this kind of walks you through each of these—each of these categories, looking at even things like the—you know, if you—couple pages, you can see it's even like the orange ones, they look at like the four-year graduation cohort rate. And, you know, sometimes like that one dropped by 7%. Well, it's a different—I mean, it's a different cohort of kids. I mean, that's the thing we always got to remember. You're looking at—you're looking at a group of kids one year. It's not literally the same kids next year. It's a different group of kids behind them, so, you know, we do the best we can to keep every kid we can, and the extended engagement rate actually did improve though, which is kids who are either graduated in five years or are still enrolled in school in five years. So I mean, you can look at those—you know, chronic absenteeism went up a little bit, so it was a drop for us. Like I said, we're looking into that more and just not only how we identify those students earlier to try to work with them, but also to make sure that, you know, if a student is in like a extended hospitalization and they're receiving services off-site, we can actually code that differently in our system to make sure that those students are basically getting credit for the services they're receiving. And so that's—that's pretty much it. Then the last page on here I gave you has the—it says schools in the district. It says Clinton Elementary School requiring assistance intervention, middle school's not requiring, Clinton Senior High School's not requiring. So Clinton Elementary School—I didn't give you the breakdown by schools, I just kind of gave you the district right now. But Clinton Elementary School was identified as requiring assistance intervention for their percentile, meaning their scores for the white subgroup and the high-needs subgroup were among the lowest in the state. So there's a threshold there that if you're in the lowest in the state, you get flagged as kind of requiring assistance intervention. I had a lot of—I had a lot of conversations with the DESE about that, about, you know, what does this mean and what happens from this? Right now, it means that we will be meeting with a—the statewide system of support team for Central Mass. They're coming out, I believe it is on Wednesday, to meet with us. What they'll do is, you know, we'll look at the data, much like we've already been looking at the data, we'll kind of come up with an action plan for them. I asked, how do we exit this status? And they said basically, just don't be in the bottom whatever percentile, you know, for next year. So it's not something that's going, you know, on and on and on, as long as we can—this one—this is strictly based on, you know, this is where your percentile brought you in, when we looked—when we looked at your percentile for growth, your percentile for your achievement, and your percentile for chronic absenteeism, and they weight those factors. And as I mentioned, it's not that the scores were dramatically different at the elementary school. It's just that combination of having third and fourth grade together allowed them to now have growth component, which before there was never a growth component at the elementary school, so they were always kind of absolved from this category of scrutiny because they were considered almost having an incomplete data set for that. In fact, if you look at our third grade scores at the elementary school, in ELA and in—in math, both of them made tremendous increases. So I don't anticipate this to be an ongoing concern. I think that we—we know what we're doing in terms of implementing our new ELA curriculum, and we just got to continue to work at it, and we use the data to identify where we need to get better, and we'll do it. This is a quick overview. I said November 4th, I believe, is a tri-council meeting. At the tri-council meeting, we'll usually dig a little deeper, not because at the October 25th, professional development, one of the things is we'll have our teachers actually looking at the data on like a question-by-question or standard-by-standard kind of basis, and we'll share some more of those summaries at that time. If there are any specific concerns, all this information is public. You can go to the DESE website and go to profiles, and you can see it. You can hunt around on it and click on it and all that kind of stuff, so—or if you have any other specific questions, you can let me know.
So the—the comparisons that they do for growth for—so the elementary school included fourth grade this year.
Right, so—
But the fourth grade that took the test this year, they compared that to the growth of—
What they—what they do for growth is they look at kids who are in your year—they had to be in your building for two consecutive years, right? So they had to take the test two years in your building. That's your cohort, your kids that have done that. Then what they do is for each individual student, based on like how they scored on like the first year, or if that's later in—how they scored, you know, they're based on their MCAS history. They look at how they scored similar to their peers who took the test. And then you—you kind of get a ranking based on, you know, okay, statewide, so that, you know, if this year in third grade, I got a 490, okay? Now, in fourth grade, they're going to compare me to all the kids across the state who got a 490 last year to see what did my fifth grade score—or my fourth grade score look like. Let's say this year I got a 492. All right, well, I improved two points, but relative to every other kid that got a 490, that might not have been very good. Maybe most kids that got a 490 improved five points, you know, or something, or it could be vice versa. So that's how they kind of compare it. So it's a little—there's a lot of things you can nitpick with and say, you know, yes or no, but I do think they—in fairness to the state, they have been trying to find other ways to sort of give schools some credit for, okay, if maybe your achievement level's not way up here, and we understood there's some challenges for it to ever be, so if we look at where your kids were and where they are now, how can we give you some credit for that? And I think that's the intent of it. But I think, you know, overall, it just—it's—you know, it's not blaming the fact that the fourth grade's there or not. I mean, that's not really what we're saying. It's just that—that changed the calculation. And—and so then, you know, and that's—it is what it is, and I think we'll—like I said, we—I think we have a good sense of where some of those gaps came from now. We've been really—we've been digging in the data behind the scenes, and now we're getting ready to kind of dig into it with the teachers a little more, and then we'll go from there. Parent reports, so parents should be getting their MCAS scores hopefully by the end of this week. We are going to mail them out this year. I know last year, we kind of handed them out to kids, and we just know that the—the success rate on those getting home is not always great, and, you know, how those conversations then get framed when someone just kind of finds something in a backpack versus getting it with like a letter from the district and stuff. So所以我们 decided—we made a decision to mail them home this year. The state is moving towards—it did give us a file this year. They're moving towards this file where you should be able to—if you can sync it with like your student information management system, that you can maybe send electronic reports home to parents automatically. We didn't—you know, when we're working with Mike McEckren, we didn't really have the—the technology to turn that around right away, but now that we have the template for that file from this year, we can look at saying, hey, maybe for next year, we can start just doing the electronic pushout of those reports.
Any questions?
I will say, as a parent, I really do appreciate the the willingness to mail them out, because, you know, as a parent, I may not share any of it with my children, so it's nice to have that option.
All right. The next thing on here is just a note about the comprehensive district review. If you remember over the summer, I let you know we had a letter that we were selected for a comprehensive district review. We just received a follow-up that the onsite visit has been scheduled for March, so March 16th to 19th, they'll have their team out here doing their review, which means our self-assessment will be due on February— will be due on February 14th. So when my wife says, what are you doing, what do you want to do for Valentine's Day? I'll say, nothing, I got to finish the self-assessment. But, but the, so you'll start seeing that self-assessment, though, it does have a lot, it's pretty, it's a 27-page document that's only going to grow as you fill in boxes. So you'll start seeing sections of that probably in different work, whether there's a section on like leadership and governance, that I'll probably have sort of the school committee ask for your input on it. The curriculum committee meeting coming up, we'll start getting those questions out to the curriculum committee, not necessarily going to answer them at the next meeting, but at least start getting people thinking about them so that we can get those answers, so we can get the input from the stakeholders for, for those questions. All right. Any questions on the district review? Okay. So the FLAC Capital Reserve Fund summary. So in here, you should have some pages from FLAC. So just, just so everyone knows, FLAC is educational collaborative that we are members of. We are the C in FLAC, although a lot of the towns that make up FLAC don't actually belong to FLAC anymore, that was the original, it was originally an acronym for the towns. And so FLAC is a collaborative, so basically, when we look at, you know, educational services, programs that we can put together, it's usually a cheaper alternative, it's basically, it's the essential, it's the equivalent of like state districts sort of saying, you know, hey, we have a few, huh?
Co-op.
Like a co-op, yeah. So it's like co-op for, for special education programs. And it's usually, you know, cheaper than going to like a private, a private placement, but also I think, you know, is very high-quality programming, and does still have some oversight. I'm on the board of directors for FLAC, all the superintendents, I think it was one school committee that sends a, one school district sends a school committee member, but almost everyone's all superintendents or school committee members that, that are on the board. So FLAC is looking to establish a capital fund, okay? So what ends up happening is at the end of the year, if CAPS has a surplus amount of money, they're allowed to carry over a certain surplus, and then I believe it's 25%. If they, if their surplus is more than 25% of their operating budget, then they have to return it to the districts. So last year was one of the first years in recent times that they did actually exceed that, and they did return money to each district. When you divvy it up over each district, it's like, we got $6,000 or something, which better than having to pay $6,000 extra. But what they're looking for is to establish a capital fund, which would allow them to sort of invest some of this money into this fund, so that they can do things like purchasing vans or equipment or things like that as it, as it comes up. So basically, when they set their tuition rates, they do their budget, and we set the tuition rates, it's based on trying to kind of essentially break even, right? We're not trying to turn a profit, we're trying to break even. Sometimes usually when this type of, when you have these profits, it's because usually what ends up happening is you have some programs that end up being almost enrolled over capacity, or the other thing is you have programs that have space and non-member districts will send kids, and non-member districts pay a higher rate. So then some, a lot of times, if there's a surplus, it's from like basically the upcharge that the non-member districts pay. So what they're looking to do is establish this capital fund so that they can save some of it. It would still only be 75% they would put in, they would still dish, you know, dish back 25% of whatever was over there, so we could get something back. And I think as the executive board, I think it'd still be kind of our prerogative to decide if that's really what we're going to do, but the capital fund would at least allow them to do it. Right now, they have no mechanism for doing that. So it's kind of like a stabilization fund for FLAC. So in order for them to do that, they need all the school committees to vote that they're okay with it. Richard Murphy is the executive director, he is willing to come speak to you if you'd like to. I said I could, I'd try to explain it with the materials, and, and then if you guys had any questions, or, you know, I could try to answer them, and if you're comfortable, if we want to make the, the motion to vote, we can do that, and then if, if you're not comfortable, I can always have Richard come back and explain more.
It's the pleasure of the board.
I'd be willing to take a vote tonight. Can I have a question, though?
Yeah.
How many kids do we have that attend FLAC?
Oh, that's a great question for you to ask, and I don't have no idea off the top of my head.
I can tell by the look on your-
I know, and I was like, man, that's a good one that I should have known. Loretta, do you have any idea how many go to FLAC?
A lot.
Well, in half our out-of-district placements. Yeah, so it's probably like 25, 24 would be my ballpark, but I could have to, I can get you, I can get you the exact number.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Steve, is the process is such that, let me say, we get five years into the future, and we put the 75% away for five years, and we're sitting on $100,000.
Yeah.
Are you part of the process to decide then, great, how that money gets spent?
Yes, so Clinton always has a representative on the board of directors that basically would figure out how, how that is spent, yeah.
Because, I mean, obviously, if the money's coming back in here, we have say-overs, if we're putting it there, we just would want to make sure that you still have say-
Yes, exactly. And I know their capital plan right now, like I said, most of it is replenishing their vans. They have a lot of vans that are reaching the end of their safe usable life, and they use them to, you know, their program, we have, we have two FLAC programs housed in our middle school, you know, they're kind of all over the place. So they end up, you know, transporting people around, and taking kids out to do life skills things, and so that's, that's their immediate need. But, but yeah, we would still remain, you know, we'd still have some control over that, yep.
Any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion to?
I think it's in bold here, to allow the FLAC collaborative to establish a capital reserve fund as approved by the FLAC executive board of directors on August 22nd, 2019.
Okay. Motion having been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to allow the FLAC collaborative to establish a capital reserve fund as approved by the FLAC executive board of directors on August 22nd, 2019? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Richard Murphy thanks you too.
Just on a side note, my niece lived there for many, many years before she passed, and they were great.
Oh, good.
It's a great place.
There are two policies I've included, and the, the goal is not necessarily to take action on these policies, and I think probably to refer them to the policy committee, but I just wanted to bring them to the board's attention and just let them know kind of where we are. So advertising in schools, basically, our policy right now reads, no advertising, commercial products or services will be permitted in the school buildings or on school grounds without prior approval of the school committee. Publications, it's supposed to not contain any advertising, this will prompt advertising, okay, you can read it. But the point is that, so, basically, it says they're not permitted, right? Unless the school committee approves it. The, years ago, I think they did some signs on the baseball field, and I think that we had the minutes that it was actually brought to the school committee and approved to allow them to do that. The Booster Club approached me about trying to do something similar again, to kind of doing the advertising, like the signs on the fields and that kind of stuff. My concern was, just I told them, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, I said I just wanted to look at our policy and make sure our policy was developed enough for it. My concern is, I don't know if we need to add something to this policy that might be more restrictive in terms of, you know, with marijuana shops moving into town, and vaping, and all these different things, you know, do we need to have any type of guidelines in terms of, or even in today's political climate, you know, do we need to have guidelines in terms of, you know, ads cannot be political advertisements, they cannot be, they should not be for products that students would be unable to purchase, something like that, you know, some general statements like that. And I just don't know, before, I figured it would be better for us to look at this first, before we go down that road and something comes up and it's, and we're, and we're scrambling to say, well, you, we'll take your money, but not yours, you know? And so that's-
No, I, I will just say, on behalf of the policy subcommittee, I think it's, it's worth taking a, a look at in terms of MASC model policies, because we can't be the only ones dealing with this at this time. So I would offer that to the board, that, you know, we feel free to kick it to policy subcommittee, and we can take a whack at it.
It's Devin, Devin.
Yeah, and I talked to Steve a little bit today at the town hall. Yeah, I would like to see the policy subcommittee put something in there specific. I know we just had a student up here talking about the vaping thing, and, you know, I don't know if the shops are open or back up, but you are going to have, as Steve said, the marijuana shops, you've got, you know, liquor stores and political, you know, we, to be kind of hypocrite if we tell them one point, if you use this stuff, we're going to get suspended, but then we're going to make money off of advertising.
That's an excellent point.
So, you know, I just think it's, yeah, to Steve's point, I think it's something to be, to put in the policy letter, then if anyone owns one of those stores, they don't have to waste their time, they can read it and say, you know, rather than leaving it up to the board members to have to pick one business over another, and kind of go down that road, so.
And fair and balanced, you know, if you don't have the liquor stores, you don't have the marijuana stores. If you have the marijuana, you should have to have liquor stores.
Right, right, like just spell it out.
Yeah.
Make sure there's clear rules, and everyone knows what the rules are.
And it's been a number of years since we've even reviewed it, so I think it's timely. Everyone's all right with that?
Extra work on your plate, I'm fine.
I'm going to delegate that to you.
And there was, there was one more policy on memorials. So our memorial policy says, actually, wait, is this, we don't have a memorial policy, correct?
No, this is a-
We don't, so we do not have a memorial policy. This is the MASC recommended policy on memorials. Basically, just says that, you know, that schools or places designed primarily to support learning, and they should not sign as, serve as the main venue for permanent memorials, and that permanent memorials within schools should be limited for them to perpetual awards or scholarships. Now, there's a lot of places that, you know, there's a lot of, same thing, like Mr. Bass just said, like, if you look, if we do a policy search, you're going to see a lot of different schools that have different takes on this, based on their own communities. Part of what made me think of this, though, is just, you know, we did have a request for someone to, they wanted to donate a memorial at the middle school, and, and then we had to, so there was multiple things that came into play here, but one of the things I thought of is, we have the middle school in an MASC pipeline, right? So someone could donate a memorial this year, and now there's some, you know, they put in some, whatever they want to donate, and then in theory, we're doing some giant rehab to that building, and the thing has to get like ripped out in a couple of years, you know what I mean? So I just felt like, before we just kind of go down that road, it might be time to sort of revisit this. I mean, I know there are other existing memorials, and obviously, I think the policy could address existing memorials, but just, you know, it's another one that, you know, I'm not saying ban all memorials, I'm just saying that we need, I think that's, we need to think critically about the process for that.
Yeah, I think your point's well taken. The more proactive we can be in the policy development, the, the easier it is to have that, that, you know, calibrated approach to, to the procedures that your team has to put in place. Again, I would offer to the, to the entire board, if, if you would like the policy subcommittee to take a look at this. You can only speak for myself?
We do not have a policy at all on memorial, so this is a model policy, this is from the MASC?
And I, and I think from what I'm hearing, too, take into consideration certainly, you know, understanding and respecting the memorials that are currently in place as well.
Right.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
All right.
Everyone's all right with that? Yeah, so, okay, for sure, thanks.
So we had a meeting to help set the agenda for a subcommittee meeting.
That's great.
There we go.
That's great.
That's all I have.
So curriculum committee is scheduled for the 20th-
Third, yeah.
At 3:00. Thank you in advance to that subcommittee, but specifically to all of the educators that come together for really deep enriching conversations around the sum and substance of, of the, you know, the important things that you do here. Did safety committee meet?
Safety committee has not. We should probably schedule one soon, because we should probably, it's probably time to do more of a coordinated Alice drills with the police department again, so we can probably schedule something. I'll, I'll try to get something scheduled, at least scheduled by next meeting, and I won't see when it goes.
Sure. Marketing?
Marketing met last week?
Yes, we met October 3rd, and we set some guidelines of how we want to improve communication, that those things that we're looking into, so.
I think one of the things we've decided to look into was maybe trying to leverage some different technology or marketing tech out there to try to see how we can improve our, our communication. You know, talk, you know, it's, it's one thing to use like the one call, but the one call doesn't really have a way of, we always want to preserve some, some of the integrity of one call, because when, when I need to get something out, I need it to be able to push out to everybody right now, where there might be some other avenues we can use that's more of kind of like an opt-in, or anyone in town can sign up for it, or anything like that, so everyone can be aware of, you know, the Friday night football game, or the fundraiser for DC, or whatever it is, and we can try to get those messages out more. So I think that's one of the main, well, first goals, and then the other one is kind of, I think, once we kind of can get a better handle on that, is sort of then, okay, now that we have this, what's the message we really want to send, and how do we want to, how do we want to send it, I think?
Yeah, those, those are, it was that, and the other thing was just about, you know, working with the schools to, to better market the positive, great things that are going on. I think often, like, you might hear in piecemeal, you know, some people know about things, other people don't, so, I mean, I think of those two things that we really wanted to concentrate on, it would be, how do we communicate better to the community, and then how do we market what's going on in our schools better and more often? So they're the two things we'll be looking at.
And our next meeting is November 14th.
November 14th. So the Policy and Procedures Committee has for your consideration a, essentially a review of JLBA, where we have, we have a number of policies that are both policies and procedures, and I feel fairly strongly that policy, where policy is our purview, procedures are the purview of the administrative team, and, and in this case, the nurse leaders. So I, when Deb and I met, we wanted to look at what we currently have, but also have the school nurses empowered to make a decision that, that in the case of head lice, if it, if it is, you know, to give them the, the power that if parents and guardians need to be communicated with, and, and it needs to be addressed, that they have that power to do that. So it doesn't, doesn't really change the wording all that much, other than, you know, to, to give that ability to the school nurses. We also felt strongly about making sure that parents and guardians would get informational materials as well.
I think, I think this is a, a good policy you guys came up with. I think it's a nice balance between sort of the, the previous versions of the policy, which are pretty much, if you have head lice, you can't come to school, and then kind of the newer version where it was like, well, it's not really communicable disease, so you can just keep coming to school. It sort of kind of gives a little bit of discretion in there, where it's sort of, if this is a severe case, a repeat case, something like that, and we need to send you home to get treated, we, we at least have that ability to do so. So I think it, I think it kind of strikes a nice balance that will allow our nurses and our, and our administrators to kind of keep their schools healthy, and also not, not quit students, just, you know, if a student is, you know, not just making students miss school for unnecessarily, so.
So, you know, we would, it's an existing policy, JLBA is an existing policy, so this had, I, we would be fine either way. If you wanted to think of it as a first reading, you could, you could adopt it as a first reading, we can, you can think about it, we can revisit it again in a subsequent meeting for a second reading. We can actually have a motion to have a first and second reading, where it's really more of a revision, taking the procedural piece of it out. It's the pleasure of the board.
I, I definitely like this reading much better than, than what we, what was presented last time, so I would move that we adopt this policy, which I would assume includes the first and the second reading.
Okay. Second and second? Okay, first and second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Brendan and I met with the facilities director today, which was a great meeting. He went over a lot of the stuff he has prioritized as far as what needs to be done, but he's also doing a lot of planning for the future, which is great to see, as far as, you know, something that may not be needed to be done now, but will need to be done in a few years. So planning ahead, I think, is really important. The high school, the phase two lighting has been completed, the auditorium's done, and in all the schools, the lighting has been done in the first floors, hallways, and exteriors of the buildings, which is really great to know. The HVAC has been updated and repaired at the high school, so that is all said. They've also switched over today to heat instead of air conditioning. They've also switched over today to heat instead of air conditioning, which I'm sure you're very happy about, as it gets a little cooler here. The middle school, we talked about the roof, the RFPs are going out this week, there'll be a few weeks before we hear back anything on that. And then the elementary school, basic, just some fun things. They replaced the basketball hoops, there's new multi-playground, they moved some playground equipment to grassier places, and like I said, it was a very light first meeting, just talking about, you know, what's going on, what needs to be done, and how we're going to get it done in the future. So that's what I have for today. Anything else, Brendan?
Yeah, I just got two things. One, I actually saw this when I hit up the middle school today. On the front door of the middle school, you have the signs saying there's cameras.
Yeah.
I asked Russ about putting one over at the football field, because he said there's cameras over there.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
I think it wanted to be a deterrent, you know?
We should let him know, yeah.
And the other one, and Deb and I talked with Russ about, you know, you listen to different departments, and everybody wants, you know, their piece of the pie, but I would, and I talked to Ed DeValt, as a selectman, you know, he kept talking about the fire station. I'd like Russ, you know, maybe just to head it, like a subcommittee, or to be a formal subcommittee, but with all the departments in town, and start compiling this, because I think we owe it, you know, to the school department, but also to the voters. If, let's say, we want to, you know, develop the fire station, that's going to cost, you know, I don't know, a lot of money out there, I'm making numbers up, but another department might want to expand something, or they may want to need, and if we piecemeal it, the last guy with his hand in the air is going to get nothing. Where if Russ had it and said, okay, here's all the, here's the projects that each department wants, now he can sit down with you and Mike and this finance committee, say, okay, you know, here's my, here's his recommendation, and here's what's going to happen first, because I know we're still on the, hoping to get on the schools list there, but...
And I know, and it's the same idea. It's almost like if we just kind of were saying, we want to redo the fire station, and we're just going by ourselves, well, that's a big project. But if there's someone, if there's another department in town that needs space or needs something, and we can kind of dovetail it into that project, well, now that's something voters can get behind, yeah, so.
So hopefully, and I'll stay on, I'll keep talking with Russ about it, just, you know, as he compiles this, and then...
Like a space, space plan, or...
Master plan or something, I couldn't remember the name either. That's why I just talked.
And Brendan, you forgot one other thing. They're replacing the football, the sign.
Oh, the scoreboard, I guess.
Scoreboard.
Oh, yeah, we got the new, the new, the new guts of the scoreboard are in, so they're going to get that up, so it should be work, yeah.
And time for Thanksgiving.
We got to score some points to use it.
We did, we did well at home.
It's been a good season for our number of the teams, and much continued success.
Nothing for negotiations at this point.
Anything under old business? Anything under new business? I have in my possession a letter. Dear Mr. Zermak and School Committee, on behalf of the entire Sterling Fair Committee, we would like to thank you once again for the privilege of allowing Clinton High School marching band to participate in 2019 Sterling Fair. Each year, the CHS marching band brings enthusiasm and added enjoyment to the Sterling Fair. These young people are dedicated and respectful. You have every right and should be extremely proud of them all. Their dedication and hard work is greatly appreciated by their participation in the parade, and it is one of the highlights. We certainly hope that the Clinton marching band will participate in the Sterling Fair well into the future, and that untold members of young people will learn the satisfaction of giving back to their communities. Very special thank you goes to the Clinton High School bandleaders, Kate Meifert and Robyn Quest, for their professionalism and dedication to the youth of Clinton. We applaud you with sincere appreciation. Douglas Downey, Chairman.
Nice.
Well done.
Yes.